Welcome to the March first Merrimack School Board Meeting. Board member Andy Schneider will participate via conference call. The meeting proceedings will follow RSA ninety-one dash A colon two, which states that all parties must contemporaneously be able to hear and speak to each other. The meeting should be audible to the public. All persons present must be identified and all votes must be taken by roll call vote. Board member Schneider. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, why is your attendance not reasonably practical?
I had both a personal and a work conflict this evening that prevented me from attending in person.
Where are you located?
Uh, in my home office on Woodward Road in Merrimack.
Okay, and are you in the presence of anyone?
Nope, by myself with headphones on.
Okay, thanks. Um, please join and rise me for the, join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, per our standard, uh, public participation, I'm just gonna give a couple opening comments as it relates to public participation. Even though we are back in person here in the Matthew Thornton Room for our school board meetings, we understand that many community members may not feel comfortable coming here in person. Therefore, we will continue to allow public comments to continue to be sent in an email for the foreseeable future. To do this, you may send an email to publiccomments@sa26.org. Again, that email address is publiccomments@sa26.org. We do require your name and address for the record on such documentation. Based on the amount of information we received tonight, our goal is always to read off verbatim the comments as we receive them. If the comments become too heavy in volume, we would just have to not read public comment into testimony. It's an all or nothing proposition. Regardless, we will put all public comments in our meeting for, in our minutes for tonight's meeting, but we would not be able to read them tonight if we can't read all of them. Up until just recently, that had only happened once, but we'd just like to address it upfront in case that becomes the situation. Vice Chair Barnes, are there any, um, public comments?
At this time, there are none.
Thank you. Um, the next item then on the agenda is number four, the board's review of parents' survey for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two school calendar. We had received in our packets, um, some school calendar survey information. And, um, Dr. McLaughlin, if you could just walk through that, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. So, um, this is a, a, a version of what the board has, um, issued in the last several years. There are a couple of, uh, changes that I'll point out just because of the conditions of this particular year versus previous years. But, um, the first question is, uh, do you support this? And again, these are questions that have been sent to the community before and vetted by the board. First one is, do you support having no school on Columbus Day, October eleventh, twenty twenty-one? Do you want me to just go through them all, or do you want to speak about each one?
Uh, why don't you walk through them all and then we'll go back and we'll address them one by one?
So, the second question, do you support having no school the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, November twenty-four, twenty twenty-one? And these are yes or no. Do you support having no school on Martin Luther King Junior Day, January seventeen, twenty twenty-two? Uh, number four is a bit of a variant, um, because in the past, we have asked a question about, uh, President's Day. But because of the way that things fall, um, I didn't include that, but we could if the board wants to go in a different direction. But anyway, question four, the current state of New Hampshire Department of Education recommendation is for February vacation twenty twenty-two to begin on February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two and end on March four, twenty twenty-two in order to avoid coinciding with Massachusetts' February vacation schedule, which is scheduled to begin on February twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and end on February twenty-five, twenty twenty-two. So, the question is, do you support a February vacation schedule that begins on February twenty-eight, New Hampshire recommendation, or February twenty-one, Massachusetts vacation? And then the, uh, options are A, uh, the twenty-first and B, the twenty-eighth. Just as a side note, um, the DOE had originally put on its calendar, February twenty-first, uh, February vacation, and then several, uh, superintendents pointed out that that, uh, coincides with New Ham, uh, with Massachusetts. And then as a result of that feedback, they changed their recommendation to the twenty-eighth. So, if people are wondering, I thought Massachusetts, uh, I thought New Hampshire had previously said the twenty-first. It did, until they found out and then they changed it. So, if the board, uh, wants to, we could add a, a separate question about, um, President's Day. That ends up being, uh, February twenty-first. So, if we take that week off, it kinda makes it a null, null point. Uh, but, but if we don't, we, we could add it. Uh, number five, with teacher workshops typically held prior to the first day of school, the first day of school, uh, next year would be September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Are you in support of continuing this scheduling structure? Then, how many students do you have in the Merrimack School District, one, two, three, four, or more? What levels of school are they in? Uh, choose all that apply, elementary, upper elementary, middle, and high school? Do you have internet access in your home? And my, uh, for some reason, I don't have the rest of the questions in my packet. No, no, actually, I think that was it. I think, I think that was it. Sorry. Yep, uh, so, um, there had been in previous years, there had been questions about, um, uh, access to computers and so on, but, um, because of the pandemic, uh, and our, uh, the district's, um, loaning out so many, that didn't seem to be quite the issue that it had been in the past. But we certainly can add it, uh, if we need to.
Okay, so I think what we can do is just go through one by one. So, the first one is, does any, any board members have any questions or comments regarding number one, which is no school on Columbus Day, October eleventh? Okay. Number two, um, any questions regarding having no school the Wednesday before Thanksgiving as a survey question? No. Um, no school on Martin Luther King Junior Day, any issues with that question? Okay. Um, now, we get to the, uh, vacation schedule, um, and the possibility of adding a President's Day question. Does anyone have any feedback regarding that? Uh, Vice Chair Barnes?
I think we always get a lot of confusion every year about whether or not there's school on President's Day. I think I've heard it every year I've been on the board. So, I think it would be something we would wanna clarify. So, if vacation week falls on the week of February twenty-eighth, are you in favor of also having President's Day off on February twenty-first? Something to that effect?
I guess my, my question is, do we wanna ask the question about school break? Or, um, do we do what we've done in the past that given that the state recommends?
Given that spring break is, do you want the President's Day, um, ho, as a holiday? And honestly, we usually get a resounding no, but it also shows that, you know, it's another data point that they can look up on that we have school, honestly, so.
I mean, I think in all the years I've been on the board, it's always been that week after President's Day.
Oh, for sure.
So, I mean, I, I'm inclined to leave it that way.
Yeah, I would too.
And then therefore just add then, instead of that, add the question about, given that the following week is winter break, um, would you be in favor of having Monday blah, blah, blah off because it's President's Day or whatever wording we've used in the past?
Yep.
Does that work for everyone, just by nodding your heads? Okay.
So, can I just clarify?
Yep.
So, what you mean is, we're not gonna, we're not gonna ask the question as to whether you prefer the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth? That we're gonna say the board has made a decision that it will go with the state's recommendation of the twenty-eighth. So, we're gonna take question four, the way it's currently worded, off, and instead say, if that's the case, do you wish to have President's Day the week before off? That's what we're gonna do. Okay, all right, yep, got it.
And just to, I mean, just to add a little bit of extra commentary, right? Like in the past, I remember that we've had issues, if, you know, if we were to be a different week than some of our other, I mean, I don't know what other, our other school districts are doing where we have other, like the tech programs and things like that. I mean, I think, you know, do we know if any of those are going with an alternate week? But, um, I guess, you know, that's a big consideration for me if, you know, so many of, you know, our other partners choose a different week or, or we choose a different week than what they do, I guess is what I'm saying.
No, it's a, it's a good question. So, um, most, the only, uh, local district that I don't know for sure about yet is Hudson, although that might have changed since I last spoke. But, um, almost all the districts, um, so we talk and, cause everybody's concerned about the same thing. And so, what most districts have done is agree to the twenty-eighth. Or in some cases, they put it to the community, in other cases, they didn't. They did what this board is electing to do. But, uh, in any event, most of the districts are opting for the week that does not coincide with Massachusetts, so it would be the later week, which is now the state's recommendation.
Okay, so we're going, so if we do this, we're going with the state's recommendation, we're also going with what our partners are doing to be the least disruptive to some of our students that rely on those other programs.
Yep.
And then we're also just consistent with.
And as I say, the only one I'm not sure about is Hudson, but I think they were leaning in that's, in that same direction. I just don't have that information at the moment.
Okay, great. I just wanted to provide kind of, you know, my, my thoughts. Um, so then the next question, um, which is number five, with the teacher workshops typically held prior to the first day of school, the first day of school next year would be September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Are you in support of continuing this scheduling structure?
Just a typo, it's twenty twenty-one.
Oh, yeah, twenty twenty.
Oh, you're right.
And I think it should be the seventh, cause the sixth is actually Labor Day, I believe. The seventh would be the Tuesday, wouldn't that be the day we would start? I just looked on my calendar.
Old school flip around.
Yeah, September seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, September sixth is Labor Day, so the seventh is.
Absolutely right. Yep, so September seven, twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-one.
All right, September seven, twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Anyone have any issues with that question? Okay. Um, and then number six, how many students do you have in the Merrimack School District? What levels of school are they in? Choose all that apply. Any issues there? Uh, do you have any internet access, do you have internet access in your home? I think internet's with a capital I.
I actually have a question. If we could, and I, again, I don't know what platform you're using, but, and of course, we started really simple with our platform. It almost probably had dot matrix. Uh, but could you actually take number seven and say, how many students do you have in elementary, upper elementary, and just make it like a form? So, it could be zero and do a dropdown? And that, that way it takes both of those and put the, just so you don't have to compile two things? Uh, as I said, if, if it could work, I think it would be, it, it would do your work for you.
Yep, so, um, I, Mark Maryfield is the one who puts these together. Uh, he's, he can do a lot of things. I'm not, I just don't answer for him, but I certainly will ask.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Are there any other questions that you think that we should ask that we have not?
I have one if, if I can speak.
Go right ahead, Andy.
So, one of the questions that has occurred to me is, this year, given we're in, the fact we're in a hybrid model and stuff, whenever there's been a snow day, we've gone to the remote model for that particular day, so we haven't really had a snow day, um, at least since the, since we've come back after the, the holiday break. So, I guess the question that I would ask is, and, and again, we haven't talked about teaching structure, but if we look at next year and if next year has any sort of a mix of remote and full-time back, for example, looking ahead, do we wanna ask the question here whether people prefer to have, um, sort of, uh, remote days from home versus snow days, so they get out earlier versus having snow days? Cause I know it's been a little contentious on social media sometimes, but it might be a worthwhile question to ask here.
Yep, Mark.
So, um, thank you, Andy. So, John has actually been working with the team, uh, of, uh, administrators and teachers, to literally, um, present to the board that question. And, um, just given all the things that have happened and we haven't had a tremendous amount of inclement weather, so hasn't seemed to rise. But we certainly can do that at the next board meeting, is present the plan, uh, that we had begun to put in, uh, begun to propose. And then the board could act on it and it could, and it could make concrete what we do for the rest of this year, or it certainly could become the norm for next year. So, uh, if you're happy to see that proposal that John and the team have put together, then we can do that. Cause right now, we, we have been opting for the remote, but it hasn't been kind of part of a plan that we put forward. We've just been trying to maximize our time, just given the nature of the year and the stops and starts. So, if the board wants that, we could put up that, uh, on the agenda for the, uh, the fifteenth.
So, so my, my only comment, and then I'll stop, is that I think that having the feedback from parents, so parents are gonna open this survey up about cal, about next year. If we, if there's data that would be helpful to us as a board in preparation for having this presentation, so we've got data in our back pocket, as to what parents thinks about it, it might be a valuable vehicle to use and sort of timely to be able to sort of get this kind of input. That's the reason I mentioned it.
Okay.
I agree one hundred percent, Andy. Uh, Shannon?
One other thought, um, because I know that, you know, the intent is that starting September, we'll be full-time, five days a week, on campus, vaccinated, in person, all the good things. Um, but we also, I think, plan to also keep a remote academy, um, a remote learning academy on campus as well, so for, for students who wanna stay remote. So, would it help you to, at this time, since you're getting all so much data? Is it, you know, not binding, but is it your intent to have your child go back to campus five days a week or, uh, continue with remote instruction in, in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two?
So, that's definitely a question that has to be asked. I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate that it be asked in the context of the school calendar.
Okay.
Um, I would, but it definitely needs to be asked, and it will be something that I think we would put forth a little bit later in the year, cause I think people's answers in May, let's say, will differ than their answers now. But I can guarantee you that there are gonna be people, I just, how many, I don't know, but that are gonna, that are gonna continue to ask for that.
Right, I just know if it would give you a preliminary data point, that of course, you can always re-ask the question based on, you know, progress. But, you know, is it your initial intent to, to send your child back to campus or stay remote? And then it can kinda give you an idea of.
So, if the board, you know.
I mean, it's up to you. I mean, it's, I, I'm, I'm fine either way, but it's just I didn't know if an extra data point would help you.
Uh, thank you, John.
John?
Thank you. Um, I just, um, I didn't wanna jump in on Mark there. I think that, um, Shannon, I think it's a great question to ask, and it's funny, I had that conversation with, um, Bill Morris prior to the break, and we were talking about, you know, just, uh, some future planning. And it's very hard, cause we're living in a, um, strange landscape right now. We're, I think it's, Laurie's now would think it'd be a little bit premature, it's cause we don't know really yet where vaccinations will be, where will be in, let's say, April, in the end of April, early May. That scope is a little better about what life will look a little bit more like, I think, to, to ask the question. I think we can ask now, but then we re-ask and I don't know what, I, I wouldn't wanna ask now and start some planning and moving forward and then have to re-ask and plan and undo or, or remove some of the things we did, so I think.
Totally fair. No, it, it was more of a, a thought that, you know, if the actual data points help, if it does, it doesn't.
I do appreciate it. I would like to do it with more of a, um, a, a scope and a vision, I think, with Bill and bring Bill forward when we start to do that again to the board, and a scope and a vision about kinda what is our program gonna look like? What can we offer? And I wouldn't wanna have any misconceptions about what we could offer, because there will be, of course, we have, um, you know, the personnel we have right now, and those are in the budget, the personnel we have right now. So, we'd have to do it within the constraints we have of what are we gonna offer.
Totally fair. I, I withdraw the suggestion.
Yeah, and I would say, I also think that, I think the misconception is a good point, because I think whatever we do, I think we need to try to do whatever we can to get students back full-time. And I know that we are all driving towards that, but if, if parents all of a sudden see that choice, they might think we're going down the same, the same kind of pattern as we went last fall, preparing for the fall. And we would have to be crystal clear in how we communicate that to avoid misperception. So, I, I agree. Board member Hardy?
Um, I just wanted to say that I, I totally agree. Um, I think streamlining, I think Shannon's question's a super valuable one to ask. I definitely agree, it probably should be asked separately in the context of a whole separate survey that might even ask other things pertaining to fall. Um, but we're talking about the calendar, I do wanna say that I agree with Andy. I would love to have the data point of feedback from families, um, in regards to snow day versus remote versus blizzard bag versus whatever you're going to propose. Just a general feedback from the community would help when we make a decision based on the presentation. So, maybe we can time that accordingly.
Absolutely, so. Uh, so I can, I can, um, so I can add that question, and I think it's the intent of the board that once the board approves the survey, presumably tonight, that we would get this out this week. And then we'd be able to have the data back in time for the board to review it prior to the fifteenth, meeting of the fifteenth, so that then you'd see those results and then add that to the presentation, so that then, you know, you could come up with whatever you choose to come up with. So, I can add that. The only question is, um, since it's not on this tonight, do you want to literally have me play around with the wording now and before the end of the meeting, let you hear it? Or do you want me to just go back tomorrow, throw it out to you, and then you just let me know? You know, I just don't know what the.
I think, I mean, at that point, it would be just a minor thing. I think we all understand the intent of the question. So, I don't think you have to, we have to go through every iteration. I would just say draft the survey.
Okay.
Ask the board if they have any concerns to let you know individually without copying all, and then go for it from there. That would be my recommendation.
And then the goal would be to get that done, uh, presumably by, let's say, Wednesday at the latest, and then results returned. I think if we're consistent with how we've done it before, results, it's about a week, so it would be the following Wednesday. We could get those compiled, and then you'd have them Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, in time for the following meeting.
Yeah, and I would be sure to make sure that you say that, um, you know, knowing that every time we have a snow day, it pushes the end of the year out, so that, you know, parents understand there's the consequence of, you know, it's not just the day off, it's that it extends the school year out, um, incrementally.
Yep.
Did it? I don't hear your, your mic, Laurie.
I know some parents like having a snow day, so after the second snow day or after the first snow day, we would go from, you know, something to say, how, you know, what would be your tolerance level? You know, because I think some parents do like the opportunity for their kids to have, you know, that first or second. That's why we live in New England, right? We dance for snow days sometimes. And so, um, you know, so after the second snow day, we would look at remote learning or blizzard bags, and some people might need just a little definition on what blizzard bags are and what they look like.
I think that's a great suggestion. Uh, Jenna?
Uh, totally piggybacking off of that, I just wonder if we should get a, just keep this question on the survey simple, like, do, you know, do you prefer a traditional snow day or do you prefer, um, prefer a remote option? Or do you prefer, um, a plan where we would have a mi, a, a maximum of two snow days with everything after that being remote or whatever? Just keep it as simple as possible.
Some kind of cap, you don't even have to say two or three, but just a cap on snow days and prior to going into remote instruction. Any other questions on the calendar? I just had one more, um, item that I wanted to bring up. Um, and I, I'm mentioning it because I've recently spoken to a parent. And it, it made me think of a, a perspective that I wanted to share, which is, there's a number of parents out there in our community that have made decisions this last year because of the COVID pandemic to find alternative learning for their children. And their hope is a hundred percent, in some cases, to get these kids back into our school district. And those parents and families still wanna feel connected to the school community. And so, um, one parent specifically asked if she could be on the distribution for any future surveys that come out, because she feels very attached to the school community, can't wait till she can get her child back. And so, under the circumstances, I wondered if, what people thought about providing an option for families that intend, that are not currently in the school district, some kind of a mode for them to be able to provide their feedback. So, I wanted to get some thoughts on that. Vice Chair Barnes?
I personally, oh, sorry. I personally agree with that, cause I, um, have nieces and nephews who are going to private schools but wanna be back in Merrimack schools. So, they would be perfect to, to survey.
Okay. Vice Chair Barnes?
Um, I would say a couple of things. If we did send this survey, um, I would also, um, I think, add one, uh, dropdown to the, um, to the question about which child, what, in which schools? And just, you may want something like other and say, you know, or not currently enrolled in Merrimack schools or something like that. So, if you are gonna use it, it gives you that data point of how many of your responses influencing an entire active school community or coming from outside the school community. Does that make sense?
I think the problem with that, though, is that they're not in our database for active community. Yep.
Uh, hey, Matt? So, um, it's, it's not clear to me that, that family, I, I didn't know. I wouldn't have, if anybody asked me, I wouldn't have known that we remove families from our Power School database if they temporarily move to, let's say, a charter school or somewhere else. So, it, so this is kinda news to me, cause I just assumed that. So, do you know the answer to that?
Not with a hundred percent certainty, but if they left a school and they went to another school, they have to exit and they have to enter the other one.
So, even, right, well, that's true for state reporting.
Tracks that for reporting and for the adequate education grant money. So, you just can't temporarily leave. You're either here or you're not here.
So, what that, what I'm.
If you're not here, you're not in Power School. If you're not in Power School, you're not on the call list.
Okay, well, that's the answer. I, I mean, I know about state reporting, but that's, I, I just, I think I, I don't know, I think I thought that maybe we maintained a separate, yeah, okay.
Can't do it.
So, so then what that means is we would just need to.
What about a paper version that they could put up?
Well, you can always get a, you can always get a listing of people and we cre, we can create.
Like a separate.
A separate group like we have with school board, leadership, whatever. That doesn't preclude it. And it's, when I go into school messaging or whatever, I can hit that dropdown and I can select those people. But it's gonna have to be updated at some point in time to reflect what's going on. If people come back, people come back, let's say, then it doesn't matter if they're still on both lists, because it'll get rid of the duplicate when we're sending messages automatically. So, John has something here.
We could also do, uh, as part of your message, Mark, we could put out a Facebook message with a, um, with a part to request a survey, so we could do our, our, our normal thing and then, then make a, make an email with a request, like request@MerrimackSAU26calendarsurvey or something like that, like we've done for other things to request. And that way, it's a, it's an offer out, and for those families that want it, they can elect to email whoever that email we determine to go to to kick out the survey. We could do it with someone in our office.
So, that's actually a good idea, because what I'm thinking is, so, given what Matt just said, we would have to build up the database again, and that would just, happy to do it. It would just take a little time, and if the goal is to get this out. So, um, in the future, we can maybe do better at tracking, you know, somehow, not better, but yeah, well, yeah, better. I mean, to track when, you know, so that we don't have to start over again to try to find those people. So, okay, so, but I think in the meantime, the idea of putting it out and saying, request a survey and, and we can use it, do it on multiple media platforms. Uh, okay. Got it.
Any other comments on that, Jenna?
I was just gonna say that yes, I think that's absolutely the way to go, because let's face it, there are people who send their kids to private school and they don't want our spam. You know what I mean? They, they, while people like you talk to certainly exist, this gives them an option to get the survey, but then we're not spamming the people who are, you know, going to BG and don't want the spam. You know what I mean?
Yep, that's good.
Yeah, I just wanted to be very sensitive, you know, to some families that, you know, I don't want them to feel left out of the school community.
Good, thank you.
Anything else on the survey? All right. We will move on to the number five, scheduling twenty twenty-one Merrimack High School graduation date.
So, um, Sharon Putney has submitted the following letter. Dear Dr. McLaughlin, I'm requesting that you set the graduation date for the class. Dear Dr. McLaughlin, I'm requesting that you set the graduation date for the class of 2021 for Saturday, June 12th, 2021. The Merrimack High School Administration requests that the ceremony begin at 10:00 a.m., unless we need to adjust the time due to the organization of graduation, given the physical distancing requirements amid the pandemic. Sincerely, Sharon Putney, Merrimack High School Principal. So again, what I think, what, what we would say is, we'd like to request the board approve that date for graduation. The particulars of graduation, I think we'd need to hold off on a little bit, and, you know, continue to inform the board about what, what the thinking is. You know, last year it involved the senior class officers and, and the senior class advisors, and it also was very dependent on the situation of the virus at that time, and there's like a world of difference between now and then. So we'll certainly continue to update the board on those plans, but for tonight, so what I'd say is 10 o'clock may or may not actually end up being what happens, but the 12th, it would be good, obviously for our planning purposes and for those who are, you know, booking trips and, or if they can, and want to plan ahead. So I just want to be clear that we're not, like, locking into all the details right now.
Gotcha. Any questions?
I have one.
Okay, Andy, go ahead.
So one of the questions has come up a few times. I mean, I know we don't have a definitive answer, but have you scoped yet, Mark, what we're looking at for the end of school this year? I mean, I know we know, don't know what snow days are coming, but you should start have a better idea for instructional hours and days and things like that. Are you, you prepared either now or in the near future to put a flexible stake in the ground?
Yes, I think we'd be prepared to come to the board on the 15th with a tentative date for last day of school, and just, again, to your point, just bearing in mind that that could still change based on a number of factors, unique to this year, but also, you know, unique to any year, given a late-breaking storm or flood or whatever, but I think on the 15th, if that's okay with the board, we would come with a tentative last day of school date.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I want to, because people are going to ask when they see the graduation date, the last, well, what about the regular last day? So if we're talking about it at our next meeting, that's, that's as good as you're going to get, so I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, we're moving on to number six, the approval of school board minutes. The first one is the January 4th non-public meeting minutes. Do I have a motion made by Laurie?
No, I, I have corrections. Do we have to make a motion to go talk about it?
You make a motion, then you correct the...
Okay, motion, yes.
Second.
Okay. But these are non-public, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got to go in. Andy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
Jenna?
In favor.
Laurie?
I don't think they're correct, so I'd say not in favor.
Then you would say not in favor.
Not in favor.
Okay. And I vote in favor. The motion carries four, one, zero. Next is the February 1st non-public minutes. Do I have a motion?
It's moved.
Made by Shannon, second. Made by Jenna? Andy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
Jenna?
In favor.
Laurie?
In favor.
And I vote in favor, so that motion carries five, zero, zero. Next, the February 15th public minutes. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Shannon? Second. Jenna? Any corrections? Okay, Andy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
Jenna?
In favor.
Laurie?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. That motion carries five, zero, zero. And then the February 15th non-public minutes. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Made by Shannon, second. By Jenna? Andy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
Jenna?
In favor.
Laurie?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. That motion carries five, zero, zero. All right, next is the acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000. Matt Chevannell?
Yes, we recently received a grant from...
Is your mic on?
Sorry, thank you. That's why I couldn't hear myself, it just wasn't the mask. Apologize for that. Yeah, we just recently received a, a grant or a gift from the Health Trust to the Merrimack School District in the amount of $3,000. This all has to do with the Health Cost Containment Committee and their work throughout the year, and as a reward for their efforts, they received $3,000. The gift was received by the Healthcare Cost Containment Committee, as I said, and will be used for work, site, health, and safety activities to benefit district employees. There's going to be six designated health and safety coordinators for each district to attend a full-day virtual training session, so that's what the money will be used for. And we thank the Health Trust for that, and we help the dedicated members of the Health Trust Cost Containment Committee for their work probably over the last 10 to 15 years, I would say. So that's it for gifts and grants.
That's great. Do I have a motion?
I move we accept the, the grant for $3,000 from Health Trust with our gratitude and appreciation with their collaboration.
And a second by Laurie. Any comments? Andy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
Jenna?
In favor.
Laurie?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. That motion carries five, zero, zero. Moving on to other, number eight, so correspondence. I can just say that either we or I receive several inquiries regarding the school calendar. Any other correspondence received by the board? Andy, any?
No, none for me.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to comments. I have one comment, which is just a reminder that the deliberative session is tomorrow at J Muse, the James Master Coloffore Elementary School, at 7:00. The requirement is to wear masks for the public that's participating and for all inside the building. We have been asked as a school board to arrive between 6:15 and 6:30. The meeting again is starting at 7:00, but we've been asked to come just a little bit earlier in case there's any assistance needed. Any other comments? All right, seeing none. New business. I have a new business item as well. I just wanted to say that I'm excited as we start to get new plans for the fall, so I'm looking forward to hear what administration comes forward with as we kind of move into the spring regarding our fall plans, and also other strategic initiatives like remediation and extension learning as we've, as we're coming through light at the end of the tunnel of the COVID situation. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I look forward to those updates. Any other new business? Committee reports. Shannon?
I have 1.5. So as we speak, the Conservation Commission is meeting also with Greer Woods Subcommittee because it has been on hiatus since the pandemic, and I think they're trying to get some reorganization. Obviously, when you're not meeting, memberships can expire, so I think there's going to be a little reorging. I am the school board rep, so we have a guaranteed seat at the committee table, but other members may be moving around, including the chair, who I believe has moved to another community. So we will definitely be looking at that. We know that Greer Woods has great impact on the middle school property and some of the academic activities we do using outdoor space, and we'll look forward to seeing what comes of that now that we're getting hopefully reactivated, but I'm with you, so I'm not really sure. The second committee meeting was from February 16th, which seems like a lifetime ago, but it wasn't. And so there are some projects, we covered that, some projects that are in the 2122 original budget, they found funding for this year, so they were able to level fund the budget. We also went over the rental fee rates for fields and facilities all over the community. Not only do, do our youth sports use them, our schools use them, but also we'll have like adult leagues that use them, and they will pay some kind of fees. So we reviewed what really surrounding towns are doing, and they have not touched those fees in over a decade. So we are definitely looking at a more structured and, and, you know, functional way of doing that, and also, you know, stepping in to be a little more, I think, technologically savvy, so it's a more manageable process because we have a very, very lean department over there. And then summer camp registrations are continuing, and also the summer camp, Camp Nattacook, is hiring for many positions throughout the camp, so if people are looking for summer work, and I know a lot of our students do, that they should contact Matt Casparius at Parks and Recreation, and we will, they will be able to see what is still available and open. So registrations are available to do online as well, so for summer camps. And that's all I have.
Any other committee reports?
I can give you a quick update. The 275th Committee is preparing to go before the town council, and then they want to work with the schools to create a lot of different activities for school-aged children, so that will, that should be coming soon. TBA.
Okay. And then moving to 11, public comments on agenda items. Shannon?
Yes, bear with me. Whoops. Yes, bear with me, there was one, and I have to refresh my phone because I fell asleep, and my glasses are fogging, so again, bear with me. So this is Amanda Venizia, resident at 2 Hamilton Court, and I urge the board to update their COVID quarantine guidelines for students and staff. These guidelines were originally drafted in August 2020. Seven months later, this board continues to operate in a fear mindset according to outdated data and research. Your disregard for national CDC guidelines and New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services guidance is harming our community, specifically my seven-year-old second grader who is continually impacted emotionally, socially, and educationally. As an administrator for London Dairy School District, it has been especially difficult to see the inequity and loss to Merrimack students, lest these administrators worked diligently throughout the summer and put together a 46-page document debuted on August 4th. This plan, which was emulated by several other districts, extensively outlined our plan to welcome back all of our elementary and middle school students to in-person learning five days per week. I've never been prouder to work for London Dairy. As a Merrimack parent who is forced to pay for my child to be tutored three days a week, I am frustrated. As an essential worker who has been working in person since March 16th, I am continually disheartened. In January, through updated research, the CDC decreased COVID quarantine for travel, infection, and exposure to 10 days. New Hampshire DHHS quickly followed suit. Why is Merrimack School District not progressing and looking to mitigate the impact of learning on our students? Additionally, there have been revised state travel documents, which all of you are failing to recognize. This is posing additional trauma upon students and staff. Our family had COVID and were blessed with mild symptoms and asymptomatic children. Why do we continue to be held to your August 2020 guidelines? My child is not allowed to attend school due to travel. She is not quarantined. She can participate in any activity within this country and does not need to be homebound. She's not a risk to other students within the conservative 90-day period following her positive COVID test. The latest CDC studies are gauging immunity to be within, between nine and 12 months. She is suffering today and will continue, and will be because you believe that you know better than the CDC and the NHDHHS. My child will return to school on 3:15. However, these guidelines must be updated to the current CDC recommendations, and those who have been diagnosed with COVID or have, or have been vaccinated ought to be allowed to travel. The mental health and wellbeing of our staff and students has been dramatically affected by COVID, and your lack of movement is prolonging the suffering. I'm by the school board to respond. Amanda Venizia, parent. And that is the only email we received, and it came in actually 7:02, but it did not seem to come through to my phone until after public comments earlier, so apologies.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. We will move to sign the manifest, and then I will entertain a motion to go to non-public session for RSA 91-a colon three, Roman numeral two, A, B, and C. Andy, how do you, do I have a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Made by Shannon, second. Made by Jenna. Andy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Shannon?
In favor.
Jenna?
In favor.
And Laurie?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. So that motion carries five, zero, zero. Thank you, and good night.